...that the closed meeting be closed and that the board certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting to which this certification applies, and only such business matters as were identified in the motion concerning the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Bailey, seconded by Ms. Garner. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturtifin?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. Now if you all stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united by God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Thank you. All right, I believe we have some recognitions. Mr. Nichols?
Yes, sir. We do have some recognitions tonight, and I would like to have Dr. Scales come up and give those.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I hope everybody's getting ready for the wonderful Christmas holidays. Tonight, I'm gonna be doing three sets of recognitions for tonight. First, I'm gonna start out with the seniors of the month. At this time, will Francis Lawrence Zorba and Ashanti Monet Revis come forward at this time? Y'all can get my hand. I'm gonna start with Frank. Frank Lawrence, correction, Francis Lawrence Zorba, better known as Frank, is Blue Stone High School's December Senior of the Month. He's the son of Alex and Jessica Zorba and resides in Boynton, Virginia. Actually, his mom's here tonight. And there too. Hey, y'all. Good. Congratulations. Thank you. He attends Bethany Baptist Church in Baskerville and is a member of the youth group here. Frank is a member of the robotics team, DECA club, and Beta club. Running is his favorite activity, though, as he is a member of the cross-country team and indoor and outdoor track teams. Frank recently won the 2018 James River District Cross Country Championship. He's a champion in cross-country. He has also finished third in the regional cross-country meet, earning all regional honors. And at the state championship meet for 2A, he finished 12th overall, making him an all-2A state team member. During Frank's spare time, he likes to play video games and basketball, although he admits running consumes a lot of his time. Frank has been accepted and offered scholarships to Theo College in Pennsylvania and University of Lynchburg, which tonight he is saying that he is going to be assigning his letter of intent to Lynchburg, University of Lynchburg. He has made his final decision. He looks forward to going to either college to go in cross-country or track, and he would like to major in engineering and to become a future biomedical engineer. So, Blue Stone High School is proud of Frank Zorba for this month. Next, for Parkview High School, I have Ashanti Monet Revis. Ashanti is the daughter of Tashina Revis of South Hill. Her mom is here tonight. There you are. Ashanti was nominated by multiple teachers for this honor. She is very involved in Parkview High School as a captain of the varsity cheering team, a member of the FCA, FBLA, Key Club, Beta Club, Pep Club, Spanish Club, and DECA, and she was a 12th grade representative on the SGA. Ashanti has worked hard during her four years at Parkview and is slated to receive her associate's degree in May from Southside Virginia Community College and currently has a 4.08 GPA. In the community, Ashanti is a choir member and usher at Northview Baptist Church. She serves as a team leader at Arby's for the past few years, and in her free time, Ashanti spends time with her family, friends, and her dog Rocky. Upon graduating from Parkview High School, Ashanti plans to attend Hampton University, which she says is the real HU, to become a doctor of physical therapy. So, Parkview High School and Mecklenburg County Schools congratulates Ashanti for her accomplishments. If y'all go to the side over there and take your pictures. You can come on up. Y'all can come on up. Take your pictures.
And we would like to ask, when we're done, if you all would stick around because we'd like to have the school board congratulate each of you.
And I'm worried because we're not tall both of these.
And in spite of that, here they are.
That would be Mr. Ritchie.
Again, congratulations to both of you all. Next, I'd like to bring up Cody Campbell from Parkview High School. Cody? Tonight, I'll be recognizing Cody Campbell. As you know, he's the son of school board member Mr. Rob Campbell and Mrs. Janine Campbell, but his accomplishment comes from the Governor's School of Southside, Virginia. Recently, Cody received a pin, a certificate, a $75 gift card for coming up with the highest score in the state of Virginia, well, first place in the small school, Governor's School category in the American Chemical Society's Chemistry Olympiad exam for the state of Virginia. Again, that's a high honor. Very good. The Governor's School of Southside, Virginia's Alberta Campus was awarded the first-year Team Award as well as the first-year School Award. The Team Award is given to the school with the highest combined total of five students, of course Cody being one of the top five, while the School Award is presented to the school with the highest overall score. Mr. Nichols, Ms. Lori Michelson, the director of the Governor's School, Mrs. Swain, and Parkview High School's faculty, staff, and administration are excited about Cody's accomplishment and his demonstration of excellence. He has a very bright future and will represent Mecklenburg County Schools very well in the future. And so, you can go and tell them about your future aspirations if you want to, Cody?
I plan on going to either Virginia Tech or NC State in the fall to major in animal sciences, hopefully become a veterinarian.
Great.
Congratulations again, Cody. Very good job. This next one's a very exciting award as well in my last presentation for tonight. It is for the two-time 2018 Southside Middle School Ace Champions. Would the following students please come forward at this time and just stand around me around the podium? Honesty Ashworth, Landon Green, Hannah Johnson, Abby Moore, Janie Pennington, and their coach, Ms. Gina Thomason. On November the 13th, 2018, the Blue Stone Middle School Ace Team won first place in the Southside Middle School Ace Conference Tournament for the second year in a row. ACE, which stands for the Academic Competition for Excellence, is an academic quiz competition in which teams compete in a toss-up or a general knowledge round and also written vocabulary as a team. Our BMS Ace Team entered the final evening of competition with the most points overall for the entire season, but they were also tied with Power Tan for the most matches won overall throughout the year. In an exciting tie-breaker round for the championship title, the BMS Team played aggressively, which resulted in an 80-40 win over Amelia County Middle School. So, again, great job by all y'all. Congratulations. If you would like, I'd like for Ms. Thomason to talk about their accomplishments this year for this wonderful season. Yes, please do.
I was not prepared to do this, but I'm always happy to talk about these guys. This is a wonderful team, and it's their second year winning first place, and I don't even know the last time a school did that, so it's a really big accomplishment. They didn't just win one trophy, they won two. They were recognized for the most matches won and for the most points overall for two years in a row. And I really want to give a shout-out to my eighth-grade veteran player, Landon Green. We could not have done it without him. He is our MVP, and we're gonna miss him tremendously, but Blue Stone High School can definitely use him on their Quiz Bowl team because he is an awesome player, and we are so, I'm proud of all of them, but I gotta give a shout-out to him because he's been with me since he was in sixth grade, and this is his third year on the team. So, they all did great. I'm so proud of them. team. I believe all four of you guys are here, right? They scored four perfect 100s in a row, which is really unheard of. All the other teams were like really impressed by us. So, woo-hoo, vocabulary.
George, did you teach these, too?
And again, we would like to have the other winners to come up so that the school board can congratulate all those that are being awarded tonight. If you all would stay there and let the others know. First of all, I'd like to echo the words that Dr. Scales said. Merry Christmas. We have several items here, but I think we can make our way through them fairly quickly, okay, which is always a good thing. For the last several months, we've been asked to have a report from the Southside Rescue Squad. I don't see Mr. Captain Moss here again tonight, so I'm guessing we'll have to put that off again until next month.
We have a call.
He's at a call. Okay. The calendar committee has met this year and put together a couple of options, and I'm gonna ask Ms. Alga if she would come up and give a report on the options for you to consider, and we will be voting on next month for the calendar.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members, and Mr. Nichols. I have the pleasure of presenting this evening the two calendar options, and I'd first like to recognize the committee that came together for the better part of a day to work through all of the requirements and all of the requests of all the various schools. I have listed for you on that information sheet all of the folks that were on that team. Nikki Medina from Chase City Elementary, Melissa Chumney and Ann Dalton from Clarksville Elementary, Kristen DeJarnett from LaCrosse Elementary, Kim Clark, South Hill Elementary, Michelle Weddle, Blue Stone Middle School, Kate Fleming and Joan Height from Parkview Middle School, Katie Wright, Blue Stone High School, Vicky Sawyers and Wesley Swain, Parkview High School, Tracy Rogers Elementary Instruction, Robin Moore, School Nutrition, Brooke Hatcher, Technology, Gary Seifer, CTE, Bill Mayhew, Transportation, Mr. Jeffers and Mr. Nichols. So, I share that with you because that brings to us, to the group, such a broad knowledge base and experience base so that we have put together the best option we feel for consideration for the upcoming school year. I have also listed for you the various considerations that we brought to the table. For example, the legal considerations, we have to have 180 days, we have to have 70 clock hours. All of those things were taken into consideration when we were developing the calendar, parent-teacher conferences, and so on, holidays. So, currently, because of our weather situation, we were hopeful that we would have a recommendation for you as to the preferred option for next month's vote. However, because of the weather, that option, they haven't had an opportunity to really wrap their brains around all of the information, so they have been given a deadline of January the 11th, and we're hopeful to get information back to you on the preferred option between 1 and 2. So, I've detailed information for you by month. Do you have questions for me?
I do. And just, I just looked at them briefly. There's really only minor differences. Can you highlight those just real quick?
Sure. So, in July, we're doing new teacher orientation, starting on July 29th for Option 1, whereas in Option 2, we'd start July 30th.
Now, just, don't go through the whole thing, but just the big differences.
The big differences. I would say the biggest difference on these, we have a fewer number of days in the first semester for Option 2, I think it is, and for Option 1, we have equal days, 90-90. So, that changes our bank time by just a day. So, Semester 1 on Option 2 would be five days banked. Option 1, it would be six days banked. And then, I think the biggest difference, we have more days off for like a teacher work day and a holiday back-to-back days, October, and then for Easter break, it's either the week before Easter or the week after Easter. So, those are really the main things. Yes, ma'am, you're welcome.
Thanks, Ms. Alga.
Very welcome.
It's still a longer day.
I'm sorry, say again.
It's still a longer day.
Yes, sir. We have to still fall under the hours for the longer days because of block scheduling. We're trying to work a semester in 90 days, and for secondary purposes, we have to do the 140 seat hours or clock hours for them to get verified credits. So, yes, sir, it would be the longer day.
Anyone else?
Questions?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Alga.
Thank you.
Okay. Item C on the program tonight is just an update for you on the drug testing policy that we have been talking about since the beginning of the year. You will remember that as we looked into it, we found that there were some components of the policy and regulations that were not in sync with one another at the beginning of the year. So, we tried to make sure that we're covering the safety of the board so that nobody can challenge it with what we have in place, and we were also looking from the perspective of the Jules that we were having difficulty with. And so, as we were looking at that piece, we discovered these issues that were there. We have been working on several components. Mr. Jeffers brought to you earlier a recommendation that would be coming, but there were still some questions at that point before we would ask of you a vote about whether it would be best to work with the idea of a drug testing from a urine sample or a drug testing from the sample of a, using a swab in the mouth, as we had been doing in the past. Upon further investigation, we are finding that there is, we have inadequate bathrooms and other components that would be necessary for the urine testing. So, the swab testing is the only option we would really have to be able to do that piece. And so, that's what we would bring back to you. And then, there was also some conversation about who could be tested, as some of the classes and some of the activities are directly related to the classes and grades that they would have. So, we are just bringing it back to bring that to your attention tonight. We have not had an opportunity to take this as the full policy to our school board attorney yet, and there may be still some recommendations or some thoughts that you all might have. So, you see it as an option, as an action item, if you were to choose to go ahead, because I know we've talked about wanting to go ahead and put it back in place as soon as possible. If you would choose to want to go ahead and vote on it tonight, you have the option to do so, but if you want to continue to look at it and get the safety committee to look at it some more, we've had a difficulty tonight or this in the past month being able to pull the safety committee or other committees together in light of so many other things going on with the new buildings, plus one of our members, the weather issues, and then Mr. Johnson has had some illness. So, we simply haven't had the chance to pull that committee together to look at it for a recommendation from that committee. But if you have questions, Jeffers is here to answer other questions about that.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes, sir.
Why is it being brought to us if it hasn't gone through committee and our attorney has looked at it?
Simply because we knew that there were questions earlier about wanting to get the policy back in place as soon as possible so that we could deter people in the schools from, as they see it, may able to work with it.
But still, it has to go through, I believe the last meeting, we talked about it specifically going through the safety committee.
We did.
Before it comes back to the board.
Right, we did.
And we talked about getting it approved through the attorney.
That's correct.
Neither one of those things have happened.
They have not yet happened.
So, we shouldn't be hearing it tonight.
Okay, that's fine.
We can just postpone it.
We can just put that off.
Plus, we haven't had a chance to read it.
Right. That's fine.
All right. All right. We also have some information from Destination Imagination that could have some significant impact, as they've made some changes from last year to this year, and I've asked Ms. Rogers if she would bring that to your attention and to the attention of the public because there's some apparently significant increase in costs that could be involved.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members. I brought to the executive admin meeting this morning the change in the cost for this Destination Imagination for a team going to Global's. As we know, they changed the location from Knoxville, Tennessee to Kansas City, Missouri. We just recently found out, and the only thing that we know at this time is that the change has changed from $750 per team member, which covered their onsite activities, housing, and food, to now a flat fee of $5,500 per team, no matter how many students or team members you have, and you can have anywhere from two to seven, and that covers registration and access to all of the onsite activities, and you can bring as many extra people as you want. They're trying to encourage family members and friends and relatives to come, but it does not cover room and does not cover food. So, that $5,500 would only get our team there. We would then need to, they would need to possibly fundraise for the additional funds for room and board. This is not being held on a university like it was when it was in Knoxville. It is being held at a convention center, so all of the housing is in hotel rooms, and the meals will be at local restaurants. They're working on the prices and trying to get the hotels to cut us the best deal, but we do not have those costs at this time. We do not know what the meals would cost at this time. So, I'm bringing it up just as the information that, you know, we only budget a certain amount of money each year for this, and this could potentially really increase the cost for just sending one team. We sent two teams last year, and this year, we have seven teams. They range in size from two students to seven students. So, obviously, to send two students for $5,500 versus seven students for $5,500, it's no longer a per-person cost. So, I only wanted to bring it to everyone's attention because the team managers and the parents want to know moving forward, do they need to start fundraising for the meals? Do they need to start fundraising for the hotel costs? Are we gonna continue to cover the cost of the registration to get the students there? But in the past, we have paid for the students and the two team managers for their room, board, and registration. So, that's just for information tonight and any suggestions or ideas or what we may need to do to think about this moving forward.
I have a question.
Yes.
How much have you set aside for a team going?
We have $8,600 budgeted this year.
So, if we have two, it would have to be divided between the two teams?
Yes, if that's the way that we want to go. Other things that play a factor, we have some teams that are recognized at the state-level competition as they earn their way that night to go to Global's, and then in the past, what we've had happen is some of our teams have placed first in either the instant challenge or the long-term project that they do, and because they placed first, they then go into a lottery. And if other teams that won their spot in two Global's can't go, then they start going down that lottery list and inviting other teams. So, we have had teams in the past to go because they were a lottery selection, not so much that they got in that first night. So, then the question came up, would only teams that make it that first night get to go, and we would not let ourselves, you know, be a part of the lottery drawing, or are we still opened up to all teams getting to go if they are invited either way?
All right. So, if we have, say, three teams to go, the money would be divided between the three teams, then the schools would raise the money.
Or the team.
How much time would they have?
The state competition is not until April, so it's a very short turnaround. So, they would need to know now if they're raising that kind of money, and we encourage the teams to fundraise all year long anyway, because for that chance of going, they will have some money already there, and they're not waiting. If they find out at state competition, it's in April. If you're one of the lottery selections, sometimes it can be into the beginning part of May, and this is May 22nd through the 25th. So, sometimes, as a lottery team, you only have a couple of weeks to turn around and raise that kind of money.
Now, when you say $5,500 a team, that doesn't count the team manager?
The $5,500 is a flat fee this year. That means you can bring as many, you can bring your team and as many guests. It only covers registration for the team and access to the activities onsite. That's all the $5,500 covers. Rooms, meals are all extra above and beyond the $5,500, where before, in that $750 cost for the team, it covered the room and board and access to those activities. It's a big change.
Right.
That was per student. Yes. So, I did some calculations. Last year...
Three would be $2,400.
Right.
Correct. A team of three is $5,500.
Right.
Plus room and board.
Plus room and board.
That's a lot of money.
Right. And I can't give you costs at the hotels at this time, and of course, meals will be wherever people want to go, so I can't tell you what that would be either. They are working, like I said, to try to get discounted rates, and there was mention in one of the letters on the Global website of an application for a scholarship that would be released in February for divisions that had difficulty with funding, that they're gonna release information about that scholarship in February. So, that would also be a possibility to be able to apply for some assistance from them, but I don't know the qualifications or any of the guidelines for that at this time. All of that's coming, and I didn't want to wait too late into the year to get some information to you so that you would be aware. It's already been on Facebook, so some of you may have already heard, and a lot of divisions across the state have already started saying they will probably not be able to attend because of this cost, which could mean that the lottery schools have a much better chance of being invited, because they may have to go through multiple schools to find someone who can afford to go.
What is your plan now?
In the past, they have driven themselves. The parents, we usually require a parent to go with each student for chaperone purposes, and usually, they carpool or they, you know, get together and they drive. So, it does change the driving from a six-and-a-half to seven-hour drive to like 15 hours to get there.
I just remembered that thing. Do you put in for every night trip that I had a bus listed on the...
Well...
I think we always put in for that just in case, but I think most of the time, the parents opt to take themselves and drive themselves, and like I said, they carpool.
We have offered in the past, particularly with the new activity buses, but there's such a long distance that typically parent at that point, because we didn't have it until last year.
Right.
It was...
Right. If a parent has to go anyway, they're gonna take their kid with them.
It's like seven, yeah, would be five to seven days, because you'd have to leave early to get there. Yes.
That's just a big...
So, just wanted to share that with you.
Okay. The Destination Imagination has been a program that our county has done very well with. Students have been excited about it. We hate to lose these options for them to continue to move on, but there's just a more significant cost option than it's ever been before. I think the fact that they moved it off of a college campus to a, you know, regular convention center and has something with the cost as well. Sounds like some lobbyist got to them and worked them.
Well, I'm afraid it's gonna hurt the whole program.
I'm afraid it is too, but I'm hoping that maybe if enough negative publicity gets out there and enough people say they can't go, if their numbers drop this year, they may have to rethink their pricing for next year and come up with something different.
How many teams do we have?
We have seven.
Seven?
Oh, but not all seven go.
They have...
Well, not in the past, but I don't want to say they couldn't.
They could with the lottery this year.
They could go.
I don't want to say they couldn't, because you never know.
And particularly when you have...
That's $38,000.
Yeah.
Yes.
And the DI, the DI people want as many to go as possible, because it's 5,500 times. So, they, that's why they have these lotteries.
Plus, for Kansas City, you can imagine their hotels will be full for a solid week. So, this is a boost for their economy as well.
Yeah. And the fact that there's the lottery option means, that's their way of saying, well, if you can't go because of cost, we've got somebody behind you waiting to go.
Right.
And that's how we've had several teams that have traveled in the past before that they got the lottery.
And also, when do you have to do fundraising in two weeks?
It's very difficult.
And get all your props pulled back again, because you probably go down...
Well, that's one, that's the reason we're bringing it up tonight.
Are you gonna come back with a recommendation?
Well, I brought it to the executive admin this morning to talk about budget and where we were and what we think we might be able to do. So, I was just asked to share it with you guys tonight, so I think we need to get back and just look at that a little bit more. But I do know that we do need to let the team managers know as soon as possible if they need to, if we need, if the expectation is that they will fundraise for the room and board, then we need to let them know that now, that if we will cover the cost for $5,500, but we may have to say we can only cover that cost for a certain number of teams because we don't have...
Well, we only have $8,600 budgeted. Well, we only have 8,600 budgeted.
Right.
No. That won't extend to two teams.
Yeah, well, they can fundraise for the rest, whatever they, if they want to.
And how much do you ask them to bring the board to the kids to the team?
Until they release some of that, I really, I'm hoping they're going to get great rates at the hotels, but I mean, I'm estimating $100 a night for a hotel room. If they can get better than that, that would be awesome.
It's a week long, isn't it?
It's a week long. It's usually six nights there. So, that's, I mean, that's for one room. That's not the whole team. That's one room.
$1,000 a couple of...
Oh, I've been on it. It's not nice.
No $1,000 by the time they get...
You go for six days for four minutes of activity.
So, is the registration covered?
It did.
The team and the parents?
Yeah.
I think we should picket the whole thing.
So...
Picket, we should go out there with...
Okay.
Any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers.
Thank you. Item E on our agenda tonight has to do with a motion that we asked you to make at the last month's board meeting, which was to give me the authority to negotiate with landowners on the property between the road, highway, and the new school so that we could have an appropriate entrance for our buses and students. We have done that, and we have agreed, and the lawyers have worked out all of the arrangements, and so tonight, it's, there will be an action item for you to go through, for us to move forward on that property purchase. Any questions? Okay, I would also like to give you some notification that you will also be voting tonight on moving from Phase One of the work with the architects on the, the school to Phase Two, which is moving that phase on to the place where they are comfortable with the basic floor plan so that we can move forward with the air conditioning, heating, technology, all of the other components that go into it. We had a meeting last Thursday night with a lot of conversation about that, and tonight is the night that they're asking that we do that so that we can stay on the timeline. But I don't know if they have other questions that we want to put up tonight before we have that vote.
Does the vote on what again?
On moving from Phase One of the architectural planning to Phase Two.
Does that include the attached image?
Yes, we agreed the other night that that would include the barn as an attached image for it to go on.
I've got a motion if you want me to make it. To approve what the changes to link the tennis schools addition of the Agorn and Greenhouses and the additional gym was a separate item. That's what we decided the other night.
Okay, did you want to tell everybody that?
We can do that. What time of the action item, I think?
We're doing it with an action item. I'll just read that.
And then we can discuss it. Thank you.
All right.
And I'd like to give you also, and the public, somewhat of a legislative action update by the governor's budget. It's been very much in the newspapers that the governor has put in because of additional revenues anticipated coming into the state coffers. He's put almost $100 million worth of extra budget items for the K-12 schools. This includes moving the teacher salaries from a 3% increase to a 5% increase. It includes paying us about $30 some million to move the ratio of counselors, school counselors, students to counselors, to 250 to one, and we anticipate that there will be some regulations related to how much time counselors must spend counseling as opposed to doing other activities along with that legislation. It includes additional revenues for at-risk schools that would be very supportive for those of us, school districts like ours, that have lost considerable numbers of students in the past, in the past decade, and we've lost over 10%. We're very much one of those schools that would benefit from that. By the calculations of the governor, that would be an additional addition of about $250,000 in 2019, 2020 for us. It includes as well some opportunities for capital improvement programs throughout the state for schools, and it's all a win-win as far as Mecklenburg County is concerned. The issue is, it's got to get through the General Assembly, and that's going to be a tall order, and as we go through the, the General Assembly this year, of course, the School Board Association and the Superintendent's Association both have days that we get to go and talk with our associates and go on to Capitol Hill and talk to the, our legislators about that. You've all been given information about what days the V S B A will be doing that, and I anticipate, once we get even more information, probably bringing a resolution to you at the January meeting, asking for your support as a board to send to our delegates and Senator Ruff about some of these things because of the importance that it would mean to us. And if you have any questions about what we look at with that, it would be, you know, I'll be happy to answer them as I know them now. One of the items that I think is very interesting, and I was asked to attend a special meeting about with the delegate that's put it in place, is looking at requiring the Board of, of the State Board of Education to move from having two diplomas options for students now, the regular and the advanced studies diploma, and moving it to one diploma option for students, beginning with the class of, the current ninth grade class. It would not be immediate, it would be down the road. The reason for that is because there is still a stigma that seems to be attached to the career and technical programs that are so important to get our students into the workforce. There still seems to be a number of items that, that favor college education as a plan to move forward with as opposed to creating a career plan, and we will be watching very carefully to see what happens with that whole process. And I made a statement, which we are beginning to see more and more of. There's still a concern in the state of Virginia that so many parents are pushing their kids to taking the toughest classes for college preparation and the advanced studies diploma so that they can get the highest GPA, despite the fact that colleges have come back over and over and said they don't pay attention to Virginia's GPAs because every school division does, grade point average is different, and yet, we still rank things higher. So, should that bill move forward very far, I would anticipate the governor and the state may come back and start looking at school divisions and asking questions about GPAs and how we're working with them. We are seeing some school divisions already making modifications so that that's not such a big deal, but I just want to bring that to your attention so you will know that some of that could be coming down the pipe. Thoughts or questions? All right, as far as other comments are concerned, I would like to point out to the Board that we have in the first semester, which we will be finishing on Friday of this week with all instruction and all test-taking, but despite the fact that we added the 20 minutes back to the schedule for first semester classes, we are short by the expectations of the state by two days. And I have gone back to the Board and talked with the Assistant Superintendent for Instruction and the Superintendent about this, and they, they understand and have agreed that we have done everything that we can. That was a state of emergency for some of that time period, and that we will not be expected by the state to make up those two days at a time when we'd have to add them to second semester, and we've already completed everything that has to be completed. So, that has been taken care of, and we've gotten a waiver from the state on that piece up.
Great.
I'd also like to bring to your attention that we are looking right now at a budget for this year, as we've talked about the budget for preparing for next year, and I'm going to have somewhat of a presentation, I'm sure, by the Finance Committee, but at this point in the school year, we are 23 students short of what our projections were, and we will be continuing to look at that, that we have January, students often come back in, in January. There's also some things going on in the town of South Hill that they anticipate some more residents coming in that could have an impact, but we, we like to watch and be fully transparent with everything going on about the budget, so that's just a concern that I will bring to your attention tonight.
But we do have more than we had the previous year, right? That's what I see on here. Okay.
No, we are fewer. We are fewer than what was projected for this year.
Right, but okay.
But we have more.
But more than last year.
Yeah, we just have more than...
Got you.
Right.
Thank you.
That's my comments for this evening.
All right, I have no additional comments, so we can move to the committee reports. The Joint Education Capital Improvement Committee?
Nothing at this time.
All right, the Finance Committee?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee met this afternoon at 5:00. We discussed several items, beginning with our unpaid meal policy. The committee had asked Ms. Moore to bring that policy to us just so that we could review it. Those balances continued to climb in spite of the policy that we have in place, and so the Finance Committee will be reviewing that policy in the next 30 days, and we are asking a couple of things to remove some things from that policy, and also, we want to show the rest of the Board a copy of the letter that might be sent home to parents of children who owe balances on meals. So, be looking for that so that we can make sure that our school food accounts are paid. We also got an update from Ms. Pfeffer regarding our school activity fund audit. Ms. Pfeffer, you want to... Each of you have a copy of that audit in front of you, and it gives you each school's balance and the accounting procedures that were taken into account. Ms. Pfeffer, anything you want to share with us on that, or do y'all have any questions for her on the school audit, school activity fund audit?
Yeah.
Just share the general comments that...
Okay, the audits came back really good following procedure and regulations. There were just a few schools that had a negative balance in a line item that they should have cleared before the end of the year and just didn't do that. Other than that, the audits have been good. There was a school that, due to a misunderstanding on how to transfer money, ended up with a negative line item in their general fund, but not in the overall funds. So, other than that, everything came back clear. Those are just items they mentioned to make sure you don't do the same thing again next year, but all the policy and regulations were followed.
Thank you, Ms. Pfeffer. And she's also going to be developing a new Student Activity Fund manual or updating the one that we have to include things that, just to make it more clear about certain procedures and how they should be handled. The Finance Committee also requested to see...
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
May I just comment that I was at the Board of Supervisors meeting when Ms. Jones presented to the Board the overall, and she was very complimentary of the looks that she found from the School Board and worked with, and particularly as they looked at federal programs that are so hard to work their way through and said they were clean.
The Finance Committee also had a few questions about our policy regarding certain line items, for example, locker funds, parking fees, and those types of things, and we're asking for a review of that policy as well, and we'll be looking at that and making recommendations to the full Board about how we might want to move forward with policies regarding those particular funds. We also heard from Ms. Pfeffer regarding, each of you has in front of you a packet. Each of the schools are, and their request for budget for next year. The first three pages are just a summary of what those requests are, and then the, the pages in the back give you some rationale regarding those requests. Those principals will be presenting to the Finance Committee next month, and that will be January the 21st, I believe, even though that really hasn't, excuse me, January 22nd, 2019, that hasn't really been approved by this Board yet, but that's when we're hoping that we're going to meet, and that will start at 4:00. So, if you'd like to hear in person from the principals regarding what their requests are, please plan to be here at 4:00 on that day. And we also reviewed the bills, Mr. Chairman, and I just want to bring to everyone's attention that there is, was a separate bill in the packet, a bill to be paid out regarding a extended learning grant that we received, and that bill is paid to the provider of the, those grant services. So, I just want to make sure, and we do have a recommendation to pay those bills as they were presented, and I think that kind of covers what we did in finance. It was a long meeting, but thank you for helping me with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Safety Committee?
All right. The CTE Committee, I don't think Mr. Cypher's here, is here, and I don't have anything. Gifted Talented Special Ed Committee?
I'd like to report that the Governor's School went through an audit due to the change in the fiscal agent, and thanks to Ms. Pfeffer, on my part, I had to do, everything seemed to be okay through Governor's School.
All right, great. Athletic Committee?
Nothing tonight.
All right, and the Instruction Committee? We don't have anything additional tonight either. Now, we are to the public input portion of our meeting. Do we have anybody sign up to speak? All right. We will move on to our action items. May I have a motion that the School Board approves the minutes of the regular School Board meeting held November 19th, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Edwards, seconded by Ms. Garner. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. Now, may I have a motion that the School Board approves the minutes of the special School Board meeting held on November 29th, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Upstaying.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. Now, we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee to pay the bills, so I just need a roll call on that.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. May I have a motion that the Board approves tonight's personnel recommendations?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. Now, may I have a motion that the School Board supports the Superintendent's recommendation for student matter, S D 2018, 2019, 07?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Edwards, seconded by Ms. Garner. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. Now, may I have a motion that the School Board approves the Superintendent's recommendation regarding student matter, S M 2018, 2019, dash, oh, eight?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Garner, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey? Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. Now may I have a motion that the school board approves the discipline hearing recommenda, or the Superintendent's recommendation for student matter S D two zero one eight two zero one nine oh nine?
So moved.
I have a motion from Mr. Edwards?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Garner, roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. And finally, do I have a motion that the school board approves the Superintendent's recommendation regarding student matter S M two zero one eight two zero one nine dash ten?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Edwards, seconded by Ms. Garner, roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. May I have a motion that the school board approves the updates to the V S B A policy B, F, G, J, and K?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Bailey, seconded by Ms. Garner, roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. And now do I have a motion about the new drug test policy?
No, we don't. Motion to table until the next, until after the two committees have looked at it, and we bring it back to the board at our next meeting.
All right, I have a motion to postpone that until the appropriate clearances have been done.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Edwards, seconded by Ms. Garner, roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell? Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. May I have a motion that the school board approves the appropriation of funds for the purchase of the property located at ninety-nine West Cross Road, Baskerville, Virginia, and that the school board accepts the title to the above-mentioned property and authorizes the superintendent to sign any necessary documents pertaining to the property?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Bailey, seconded by Ms. Garner, roll call?
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. Now may I have a motion that the school board approves the resolution to correct the property description for the old South Hill Elementary property and to execute a corrected deed?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Garner, seconded by Mr. Sturdivan, roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell? Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. And now may I have a motion that the school board approves the first phase of the new secondary school project and gives permission for the architects to move forward for the second phase?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve to move forward with the construction documents with changes as noted, delete the tennis courts, addition of agricultural barn and greenhouses, and to bid the additional gym as a separate bid item.
All right, I have a motion from Mr. Edwards, any discussion? Can you read that one more time, Mr. Edwards?
Delete the tennis courts, addition of the ag barn and greenhouses, and bid the additional gym as a separate bid item.
Okay, second. All right, I have a motion from Mr. Edwards, seconded by Mr. Sturdivan, is there any discussion on that?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The greenhouses, isn't that part of the ag program?
Well, it had, it's not on the plans, and so we have to stipulate that they be on the plans for the bid documents. So that's the reason we needed those separated from the barn.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, I have a motion from Mr. Edwards, seconded by Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Roll call?
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. Reminders, January, excuse me, December twenty-fourth to the thirty-first, winter break, schools closed. January first and second, winter break, schools closed. January third, teacher work day, no school for students. January fourth, professional development, no school for students. January seventh, students return to school. And now we're to our board member remarks. Ms. Garner, would you start for us?
Yes, I wish all of you a very Merry Christmas, hope you get all your wishes, and have a very restful week.
Thank you, Mr. Sturdivan?
I would like to say the same thing, Merry Christmas to all, and everybody have a safe holiday.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey?
Yes, I just want to thank the members of my Finance Committee, Ms. Dor Garner, Mr. Glenn Edwards, and Mr. Gavin Honeycutt for their hard work this year. We, we, we do a lot, and we meet monthly, and we're always the first ones here, and sometimes the last ones to leave, but I want to thank them for their work this year, and thanks for working with me and attending and always having cordial discussions. I'd also like to thank our architects for putting together a beautiful plan. It is going to be a, an amazing school, and I'm really excited to, to move forward with this and keep it on schedule, because we need it badly, and I'm excited for that project to continue. And Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and don't forget to read twice the night before Christmas at least once, just one time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards?
Yes, just Merry Christmas to everybody, and remember the reason for this season. Thank you.
Mr. Campbell?
I'd just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and thank you for all your hard work.
And I would echo what everybody else is saying, and I also want to thank my fellow board members for all, for pulling together to move this school project forward. Everybody that lived in this county for any amount of time knows it's been a long time coming, and it has been, at times, a rocky road, but I appreciate everybody up here pulling together and putting differences aside to move everything forward. So it's been, in that way, it's been a very good year, I think, for Mecklenburg County Public Schools. And if there is nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.